So the commission approves the cemetery certificates.
Because it's, it's not conveying that cemetery certificate is a right to be buried. Right, so you have rights to be buried in your favorite cemetery. So they're, people looking at that spot, that's mine, I don't know.
I didn't do that.
Whether you do, whether you don't, if they, they get that square and be read through. Or tell the second half, or tell the second half. But, you know, it's conveying.
Opportunity to basically occupy it, new opportunity.
Yeah, and people have to heed, heed it. But yeah, it's the right to be buried. I guess we should put their nameplates back up.
I think our battery is dead in our clock. Can you reach it?
Is that clock ten minutes slow or am I ten minutes fast?
I think it stopped. Good job, I'll go get us a battery.
Oh dude, double A.
Double A?
Mm-hmm.
Good morning Heidi.
Good morning, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Doing okay.
Did anything fun over Easter?
Uh, no, not really, we just had a little quiet Easter at home, so.
It was kind of, every time we'd get ready to head out the door, the wind would start blowing, so. We win anyways, because if you wait on the wind, you won't get anything done, right? So.
Yeah, I know, it was, the wind, it is pain.
It's a, it's a fun thing in the spring, seems like it's always worse.
Yeah, for sure.
Make, then rail vac batteries, they're Duracell. Oh, them made in China, you guys better start buying rail vac, they're made in this country.
Okay.
What kind?
He says rail vac, this is a Duracell.
Is that Walmart?
Look on that battery, see where it's made.
It doesn't tell me.
That's because he probably already knows.
I already know, I didn't investigate that, I researched that.
You already know, yeah. Mm-hmm.
Now this is the.
Yeah.
I'm gonna take the glasses off.
That stretches me.
Those are always hard, even when you can't reach.
Yeah. How's the race going?
Yeah.
It's going so good, I guess. That's got his booty.
It is.
You want?
You drip.
Over nothing.
Over the water?
Yeah. Great effort. Yeah, so it's.
Nah, it's gonna be short maybe.
Yeah, it's gonna be short.
It's gonna be a save. Your word just.
You already told me not to say that.
I know, I just did.
Hey Joel, hi.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Doing well.
Good, good.
How things going?
Good. On the beginning of the birthday. Yeah, awesome, it's just like seeing it here, it's like a familiar face.
Name and town.
Well, that is a good scene.
How's it like doing? Doing well.
Is she good? Good, good. Glad to hear it.
It's good.
And you're working your new job and everything, do you?
Yeah.
Fun, it's kind of fun.
It's right in my alley.
Yeah.
They don't know anything about a little political thing.
Maybe you want to be around, wander around. How are you?
I'm doing wonderful.
Good.
I've got some questions for all of you all these times.
Anytime, we know our doors are. Yeah, our, our, our doors are open, yes.
Today won't be the day.
Anytime, okay.
Jay, what's going into you, you're something that I'm behaving.
Is that what we're here behaving?
Well, that's the, what's getting into you.
I'm waiting for another five minutes.
You say, you got, you got a fever, what's going on?
No, just kind of enjoying the peace and quiet.
Okay, I'll be quiet.
It's been pretty hectic around.
I'll have to get out of character and be quiet.
It's so classic, I know, it's so classic.
Morning.
Let's go.
I feel like it's bringing everyone is optimistic.
Hey, how are you?
It better be a short year. It better be, it's a short year, so.
We can always hope for a good one.
Not like last Monday.
What's going on from the other side?
Anything coming?
I, uh, come in.
Yikes, this one's up too tall. Okay.
Everybody says fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes, that's all we got.
Mike came in the other day and said two minutes. Hour fifteen minutes.
Oh, you never believe that, yeah, you never believe.
Okay, it is eleven o'clock, we'll get started with our county commission meeting. We're located here at, uh, our commission chambers. It is eleven o'clock, April eighteenth, two, two thousand twenty-two. Um, I'll start off asking everybody if you'll silence your phones or turn them off if you would. We'll start out with a prayer from Heidi Lundberg and then the pledge from Barbara Semper.
Our Father in heaven, we're grateful for this day, and we ask you to please be with all those who are making decisions, that they can do what's best for the county. Please be with the first responders and law enforcement and all those, and keep them safe and protected. And please be with those that are aided by temper and care, in David's name, and in the name of Jesus Christ.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Heidi, thank you Barbara. Uh, next item on the agenda is approval of minutes for the special meeting of April seventh, twenty twenty-two.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the special meeting minutes of April seventh, twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Next is approval of minutes of April eleventh, twenty twenty-two meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes of a regular meeting of April eleventh, twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Next on the agenda is report of the warrants and review of count, oh, excuse me, approval of the transcripts of the legislative hearing for three thirty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I guess I'd like to make the motion that we approve the legislative hearing transcripts of oh-three thirty-one of twenty twenty-two.
But was it, there was something on there or change?
Yeah, the only.
We had a change, but it was changed, wasn't it?
I was gonna bring it up after, in the discussion.
Oh, okay, okay, a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, um, we have a need for discussion on those transcripts, on a couple of the items where it talks about the swearing-in. It has Commissioner Haslam doing that, and it was Commissioner Stringer. So with that, any other discussion? Uh, well, on, on pointing to that then, Mr. Chair, are you wanting the transcript to then reflect that and, and be accurate of that change, or how are you? I think. Because the motion is to approve right now. Yeah. But if you have some noted changes.
With the change.
It is a concern.
Well.
It's up to you, I mean, I, I just think that it needs to be correct.
I think it's a, it's fine to correct, because it's a transcript, it's not, it was taken from a recording. The only thing that was on there is that it was the swearing-in, because, because it was a recording, we didn't every time say, this is Commissioner Stringer talking, this is Commissioner Haslam. So it was accidentally attributed to, so it's just a change.
It's just a change in the name, in the speaking.
In the name, yeah, not, not the.
So can we have the motion reflect that?
Yeah, not, nothing that was spoken.
If the mover wants to amend the motion, to then have those changes reflected, and then we'll have it seconded again.
All right, I'll make a motion that we amend the minutes to, uh, to reflect that it was Commissioner Stringer instead of Commissioner Haslam making the motions.
Or the swear, the, where you're swearing in.
Swearing in.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Now, the report of warrants and review of countersignatures of certified list of claims.
Okay, Commissioners, I want to follow up on Commissioner Stringer's comment last week on those few that was there. Those were requisitions that were automatically generated through the payroll system.
Okay.
They contain PPI on them, personal and protected information, they were HSA deposits, deposits into the credit unions, union dues for the officers, and employee memberships into the rec center, Warriors Warehouse, things like that.
Okay. I have two more today, that are probably the same kind of thing.
Probably the same thing. With that also, Commissioner, we have a list, we, we have one list of claim today, check number three seven nine four four four. This was done by the road department, uh, I'm sure they didn't know when they, they called that advanced towing, to pull in a plow truck that had broke down, and wasn't sure what the price was, but they did not receive a PO for that, it was seven hundred ninety-five dollars, on April eleventh through advanced towing, so that is being presented as a claim.
Um, Mr. Chairman, if I might, there's also check number thirty-seven, three seventy-nine, five nineteen, for eleven thousand Unified Fleet Services from the sheriff's office, no purchase order.
That is a lease agreement that you guys have already signed, approved a lease with that, uh, with that company.
Okay, three seven nine four ninety, Redwood Toxicology from the attorney's office, I think that's a similar. Um, check number thirty-seven, three seventy-nine, five fourteen, US Bank, uh, Corrienta Buckle Company, Western Park, and then also thirty-seven, three seven nine five one three, US Bank, Fox Rental Community Development, no purchase order either. And then the other two were payroll, that I think are the very similar. So each one of those, like the sheriff's office, and John Redwood Toxicology, I don't know that one. Western Park and Community Development, but we can check with those.
Western Park was a, that one, we did look at that one. The way that Western Park does their subcommittees on all their little, whatever they give them, a purchase card, that says, your budget this year is a thousand dollars. And so they go out and, once that thousand dollars is gone, they have no more money to spend. So the purchase.
Was it on a credit card?
It's on a P card, would have been on the P card, purchasing card. That's the advantage of the purchasing card, we can say, you're over the baby show and you have a budget of a thousand dollars. When that thousand dollars is gone, that card maxes out a thousand, and it shuts them down.
So a question on the, uh, road department, when they called the.
Advanced towing.
Advanced towing, should they pay for that with their credit card then?
No, they should have called and got a PO saying, hey, we're gonna send out John Dode, or advanced towing to get the, to tow the truck back. They should have issued a purchase order at that time. Or I would have thought advanced towing would at least give them a ballpark number, what it's gonna cost them to go tow it back.
Okay. Any other comments, what was the, uh?
Total amount of the warrants?
Yes.
Do you want that, okay, do you want to act on?
Yeah, I can act on these first, and then I'll, I just would like to have the total amount of the warrants.
Total of the warrants was two hundred and sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents.
Okay, perfect. All right, so we need a motion on the certified list of claims.
Mr. Chairman, um, move to approve the countersignature on the certified list of claims as presented.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Cemetery certificates.
We have three today, Commissioners, starting off with Mazor Fairview Cemetery, Mickey Lee Allred and Casey Allred, lot six twenty-eight, spaces three and six. Moving to the, staying in the Mazor Cemetery, Aaron Johnson and Jill Johnson, lot ten fifty-two, spaces three and four. Moving to Vernal Memorial Park, Martha Hall, block P thirty-one point five, lot two, space one. Staying in Vernal Memorial Park, Julie Jackson and LJ Jackson, lot two oh eight, spaces twenty-seven and twenty-eight, and lot two oh five, space twenty-two. Stay in Vernal Memorial Park, Ramona Massey, block H seventy-four point seven five, lot two, space six.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the cemetery certificates as presented by Mike Wilton's.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Tax matters today.
I have the twenty twenty-two county exempt properties list, these, all these, uh, individual agencies have re-applied. There is nothing new, other than two is being removed, uh, the powerhouse ministries is no longer being used as a church, so it will go back on the tax roll. And then personal property for key radio, no longer is required even file, so we pull, we would recommend that they come off.
Okay.
Okay.
Entertain the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve, uh, the twenty twenty-two exempt properties list as presented by Mike.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion, John, Mike?
Did we add many of this, sir?
No, there was no new ones, no new ones.
And just, and two came off?
Just the two came off, at least that had applied, the churches never applied for any additional properties, like they have in the past.
Hospital or the medical center over there?
They're already on it from the prior year, those were moved up, let me double check, make sure they are on here, United Basin Medical Center, so yep, it's on.
Okay, and then, wasn't there one we were having issues with, that was over there by, in Ballard? We got that one figured out?
Old Shop Co., that's on here.
Okay, all right.
Then there was another housing complex that they were trying to, from several years ago, they appealed to the state, and they have since have not applied anymore.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, motion passed.
Commissioner, can I take just two minutes to introduce Kurt Maurer?
Yeah, that'd be great.
He's my new accountant that we've hired, comes with good experience, several years in governmental accounting. Kurt, I'll let you tell a little bit about yourself.
Thank you Commissioners, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Mike, um, my name is Kurt Maurer, I've been in the clerk auditor's office for about a month now. Um, and I've had an opportunity to work with, with the three commissioners in the past, with, in, with a prior organization. I'm excited to be part of UNA County, and, uh, look forward to working with the citizens of U, the citizens of UNA County and the elected officials. Thank you.
Thank you, welcome, welcome, glad you're here. Any other tax matters? Needs to take care of today, okay? Business licenses.
Good morning, Gabby Hawks Blackburn with Community Development, we have three today, two of them have the same conditions, I don't know if you want to hear those together.
All three home-based, or all?
Yep, all three home-based.
If two have the same conditions, we can use those two at the same time.
Okay, let's do those first. So the first one is Jensen Trucking LLC, um, it's located at eighty fifty-five North Highway one ninety-one in Vernal, parcel number three seventy-nine five. This is in the MG one zone, so they applied for a conditional use permit to park two commercial trailers and two commercial trucks at their home in the MG one zone, that's the maximum allowed. Uh, that CUP was granted, and then they applied for a business license for this business, um, to go along with the CUP. So we went out there, checked it all out, the home is just being used as a office, basically, so the conditions on this one are that they follow all conditions of their approved CUP, and that they follow all home-based business rules and regulations. The next one is almost exactly the same, but it's for Sidewinder Hall, Hauling, located at twenty-six eighty-seven South Forty-five Hundred East in Fort Duchene, parcel number fourteen thirty-three eight. This is another trucking company, they applied for the CUP to park one commercial truck and one commercial trailer at their lot, which is the maximum allowed in the A four zone where this is located. And that was granted, so then they applied for the business license to go along with it, same thing, the home is just being used as a home-based office. And so the conditions are also that they follow all conditions of their approved CUP, and follow all home-based business rules and regulations.
Okay. Entertain the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make that motion that we approve Jensen Trucking and Sidewinder Hauling, with all, uh, home-based, uh, regulations and stipulations with parking, and, uh, for trucks and trailers, that has been stipulated in their approval at this time.
Okay.
It's covered.
Have a motion?
And I, I, I second, I just, I did have a clarification.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, um, any discussion?
So, um, Commissioner Horace, that included not just their business license, but their conditional use permits?
Yes.
As well, okay, that's what I thought.
Okay, any other discussion? We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, motion passed, okay.
Great, the next one is BBS Searl Trucking LLC, located.
Was that, again?
BBS Searl Trucking LLC. It's located at one 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 zero three East, seven thousand North, parcel number thirteen forty-one seventy-eight. This is another trucking company, but they did not apply for the conditional use permit to park their trucks and trailers at their home. So, um, they're just using their home as a home-based office as well, and their conditions are that they follow all home-based business rules and regulations, and that no commercial vehicles or trailers are parked at the home until an approved CUP is obtained.
Okay. Any further questions?
I did, um, no parking until they got a CUP, were they planning on a CUP, or did they just not?
They're not, they park on their sites.
Okay.
But if things change, they would need to come in and apply for the CUP.
Okay. Sounds good. Any further questions? Entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve the business license for BBS Searl Trucking LLC, uh, they don't have a CUP, they just have a home-based business, and they follow all the rules that pertain to home-based businesses.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thanks Gabby, appreciate that. Okay, the next item on the agenda is consideration approval of purchase agreement for real property. We have two, well, we have two. We have two. Well, we have two underneath this one. Go ahead.
If you're ready to go, I'm gonna get.
We have two under this, so.
Thank you.
Good morning to the community and good morning Commissioners. I'm Ken Campbell. I'm the director of the Vernal Regional Airport. This morning, in an effort to keep the pace with the rest of the meeting, I'll try to be brief. It's been good. I'm here for the purpose of requesting approval for the, for an, for a purchase agreement just handed to you for property located at nine hundred East, five hundred South, with reference to the airport. It represents seventeen point nine one acres and is serial number zero five dash zero four two dash zero 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 three. That property has come to our attention almost a year ago as property in a zone for the airport called the Runway Protection Zone or the RPZ. Federal government approached us, specifically the FAA, about the fact that that property is for sale and it is in the RPZ. So we have been in negotiations since that time with the property owners to purchase that seventeen point nine one acres. We've come to a conclusion, as seen on your piece of paper, that in this agreement, we would purchase that seventeen point nine one acre parcel located at nine hundred East, five hundred South for three hundred, three hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars, as described in the contract that I've given to you. Do you have any questions? Actually, before I ask you for questions, there's one more piece. The northern portion of this, what you'd probably call a rectangle, I guess, the northern portion of that, there's seven, or excuse me, five point seven one acres will be leased back to the seller for five years. Any other questions?
I don't have any. It's something we've been looking at for a long time.
We've been working this for a long time.
You came and presented to the county commission meeting about this piece of property before.
Couple of different times. When I first found out this was the situation, I reported on it. And then as we've gone along and talked about the negotiation of how much and why and all of those things, I've been, been here a couple of other times relative to that. This is kind of the culmination exercise. If we can approve this contract, we can move forward with the combined city and county monies to purchase this piece of property and then lease a portion of it back to the seller.
Okay. Any further questions? John, do you have any?
All right, Mister Chairman, I'll make an attempt at this. I'd like to make the motion that we approve the real estate purchase contract for the land at nine hundred East, five hundred South, seventeen point nine one acres, serial number five forty-two two, for the purchase price of three hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars, with appropriate signatures and authorization to, for those signatures.
Okay. Have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Do you have any discussion?
Mister Chairman, I just want to be clear. This purchase price here, the airport is a joint venture with Vernal City.
Yes, sir.
And it is also a, because this is FAA, it's eligible for reimbursement.
This particular purchase, by way of agreement through the county and the city, the, the county know, the county owns seventy-five percent of the airport. The city owns twenty-five percent of the airport, and currently the airport is managed by the city, as you all know. That's for the public's thought processes there. We get reimbursements through the Federal Aviation Administration for things such as this. But as the county and as the city, together, we have decided to use county and city monies on this and free up those other federal aviation funds for the betterment of the airfield itself. Some of those funds are restricted by way of capital improvements, where this land purchase, I think, is better for us to show some credibility for the FAA of giving us federal funds to do other capital improvements.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
So three hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars is the total price, but U N A County's three quarters of that?
That's correct.
And this is money that we already have budgeted for the operations of the airport this year?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, those are my questions.
I have no other questions. You? Did we already make a motion? I can't remember. We did? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
The lease that I spoke of, I probably should have said this earlier, but that lease that I spoke of will be adjudicated by the management of the airport, airport or the city. So, any further questions?
Nope.
Thanks.
Thanks, Ken. Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, John?
Yes, Commissioners, the next one, I'm filling in for Matt Kazir, who is out of town today. He asked if I could just do a brief introduction of this next real estate purchase contract. If there's any hard questions, though, I'm gonna say you need to pick on Matt Kazir and not me. So Commissioners, as you know, we have been in contact with the landowner up by the Moonshine Arch Trailhead. There's a parking lot that is, that currently exists up there, and we have the opportunity to purchase two additional acres into that parking lot that will allow for better parking, for people to get up there and, and also with horse trailers and stuff like that, there's some hitching posts up there and allow for a little bit more room. So the terms of this contract, it is approximately a two-acre portion of a vacant seventy-five point five six acre piece of property. The county surveyor is going to determine and provide the legal description for the two-acre portion. It's serial number zero three zero eight zero 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 one nine. The address is six eight three zero North, two fifty East in U N A County. And the purchase price is for six thousand dollars per acre for approximately two, two acres.
Over six thousand per acre?
The purchase price for the property is six thousand per acre for two acres. A deposit of six hundred dollars will be placed within the title escrow account no later than April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two, and then completion of the sale by May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay.
There are, there are provisions for green belt. If any portion of the property is presently assessed as green belt, payment of any rollback taxes assessed against the property shall be paid for by the seller. And there are title inspections, title and inspections no later than May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay. Any discussions, any questions you have on that?
The only thing I would mention is that we've, we've been working on this for some time. Not this purchase, but managing that area. And the use has exceeded what we've got up there available. If we don't do something, it's not gonna ease the, the amount of use, and the property will just get more expensive as time goes by. At least that's, that's the most likely scenario. So I'm glad to see it, we've finally reached a point where we have a decision that we can make. It took a while.
Yeah, that's, I was gonna mention that it's been a combination, too, with the state. We are rebuilding the road that goes into Moonshine Arch. We've changed, we're gonna change the, where the road actually goes. The state is gonna build the, I don't want to call it an off-ramp, but it's a.
It's an acceleration.
It's a acceleration ramp that they're gonna build up around the corner, so it's a safer place for it to exit and enter the road. So it's been a combined thing with the state for a couple of years now, and, and so we're just, it's finally to that point that the parking lot that's there is too small, and we've got to grow it, so. Okay. Entertain a motion.
Mister Chairman, I would make the motion to enter into the purchase agreement for the two acres at six thousand dollars an acre, including authorization of signature.
Okay.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay. Part of the agenda, it's a public comment. We have ten minutes, three minutes per person. If anybody has a public comment, they're welcome to come up, state your name.
Tammy Meekum, U N A County citizen. I want to thank the Commissioners for thinking of getting Sheriff Flabrum a raise. He deserves it. I think police officers are underpaid. They spend time away from their families. They put their life in danger. But as I've been thinking about this the last little while, the thing says elected officials. What about all the other elected officials in the county? The county assessor, county recorder, county attorney, county auditor? If they dare come up to the mic and say when the last time they've received a raise, not a cost of living raise, that doesn't count, but a performance raise, I actually would like to challenge the Commissioners to look at our all-elected officials that are, maybe haven't received a raise in a long time, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. I'm actually gonna go ground them out. So if I have to speak next week, then I can have when they were last received a raise. And I do appreciate Dan, when you stood up there and said, thank you to Sheriff Flabrum, because it's, it's a position that's, nobody wants to do nowadays. But I really would like the Commissioners to look at all elected officials. It says elected officials, and I think it's interesting that you just did, Sheriff Flabrum. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment? No pressure. Okay. Seeing no other public comment, we'll close the public comment time and have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We're adjourned.